Hi Joan. It is October 1st, 5th, excuse me, and it's 5:30 and I call the meeting of the New Line to Select to order. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make that are not on our agenda? Yeah. Would you like to make some comments? But please, please come up to the mic.
We don't say play the Lakers, huh? So.
No, no, we've never started that tradition. So just, if you would say, say your name Joan.
Hi.
Because we're being recorded.
I don't hear too well, but I am. Okay. Hello, everybody.
This is Joan Williamson.
Well, I'm Joan. If I lose a voice, I'll have to get some, I got water. I'm Joan Williamson. I've lived here a long time. I even saw the landfill that we had in New London before, before we got the transfer station. And I'm gonna read most of this because I'm inclined to ramble and go on. That's what my kids tell me, so. Anyway, I've been concerned about how, how, how New London gets rid of its solid waste and recyclables since about 2007, when its 20-year contract, indeed, oh, oh, when our 20-year contract ended, which was, you know, sending our solid waste over to Claremont, where recyclables were separated and, and they burned it and made it into electricity that was useful, that was used. And that was a 20-year contract. When the 20 years were up, then instead of renewing the contract, New London and some of the other towns between here and Windsor, Vermont, decided to send their trash to landfills because it would be cheaper. And because a number of towns did this, the Claremont plant had to make a business. I mean, and they have to get a certain amount of waste guaranteed every day in order to run the business. And so it, it closed. And since then, and I think it's, my estimate was it was about 2007 that the contract ended. And so we've been sending our trash and recycle, and recyclables that, excuse me, any kind of trash and solid waste and recyclables that wouldn't, wouldn't sell, 86 miles up to Berlin, New Hampshire, to a landfill up there. And now, it started this year, they also added all paper waste because you would have to pay someone to take your paper waste and cardboard and so forth. And also, there are few recyclables that are recycled. So we have even more that's going up there to the landfill. And let me see what else here. So I've been watching what Concord's been doing because its trash removal contract ended this year. And Concord had had a system and they didn't use, they were able to take care of everything without using a landfill. So I was really interested in them. And I've personally talked to a solid waste expert who sold his company and he retired about three years ago. His name is Ted Siegler. And he still visits places to solve problems when, when he's, excuse me, invited to, and when he's invited to speak at conventions. So he definitely is keeping up on everything that's going on. I talked personally with him and this is what his report was. I, you know, I asked him to do things like to get the absolute facts of what Concord is doing. I called and talked with Chip Chesley. He's the director and he's the general manager, the general services department, city of Concord. I think I will put my glasses on. This is, because he, this is his, what he sent, what he gave to me. And they recently entered into two new 10-year contracts. First, Casella will collect recycling and trash in two new rolling carts. Recycling will go to Casella's Materials Recycling Facility in Charlestown, Massachusetts. They will continue to collect all recyclables, paper, plastics, aluminum, steel, and glass. They are not discontinuing recycling. Casella is a very interesting company because it's a very popular country, it comes out of Vermont, and, I mean, it's popular even with its employees, that's what I've been told. And they do all this recycling and so forth, but they also have a landfill. So there are, still is some things that apparently they, they have to get rid of. So you get all kinds of articles in the paper about them. It doesn't tell you the good things and the bad things, but they do everything. So, he said, recycling will go to Casella's Materials Recycling Facility in Charlestown, Mass. They will, oh, I read through that. They will continue to collect all recyclables, in case you didn't pay attention, paper plates, aluminum, steel, and glass. They are not discontinuing recycling. Residents will dispose of all their non-recycled trash in, they have, remember, this is a big city, they have pay-as-you-throw bags, which they will put in rolling cart for collection by Casella. All trash will go to the Wheelabreder Waste-to-Energy Plant, which is in a part of Concord. Now, I read about what our solid waste reduction committee has been doing and accomplishing in the August 29th and September 26th Intertown Records. And there are other good articles about them too, but these are from them. And I definitely congratulate and thank them for all the things they've done and are doing. And I was really especially delighted that they visited the Wheelabreder plant. I tried to get a group that I was associated with to go to the Casella plant, but it was in Butland, Vermont, and I couldn't get anybody interested to go. But if anybody wants to go, I'd still like to see it. It's apparently quite a remarkable place. Let me see. So I, I, so I asked the solid waste expert Ted Siegler about the August 29th comments of Bob Harrington, our Highway Public Works Director, I'm sure you most all know, which I will quickly read. I copied them down and let's see. I put them right on this one. It starts with, "The Waste Reduction Committee toured Wheelabreder Technologies. They urged the board to read their report and consider doing business with Wheelabreder." And you read what Ted said, that Concord is sending its solid waste to Wheelabreder. And you see, that's not going out of state, it's not going far. And incidentally, there's always conversation about trucks, why do we let, why do we take any solid waste in, in New Hampshire? Or why do they take any in Vermont? And they do take some in Vermont. It's because it's a federal law that you can't stop transportation of, I guess, most anything across state lines. That's a law. So, let me see. Then, then, Selectmen Hill, he asked Bob Harrington to speak to this, saying there were possibly some issues. And Bob Harrington, very good fellow, he said he would love to do business with Wheelabreder. They're closer. But in the past, once they have a contract, the price goes up substantially and there's no getting out of the contract. He suggested the town read carefully. So I had Ted read this and you know what he said? Negotiate, negotiate, negotiate. You may have to pay a little more in the beginning, but you'll end up saving, not just money, but saving and helping the environment. You can't negotiate and say, well, let me try it for a little while, or I'll do it for a year, because it's a business. You have to, I would imagine, I've never done any of this, but 10 years is probably, might be the minimum, I don't know. As I showed you, for the transfer station, towns all the way from New London to Windsor, Vermont, were convinced over a period of three years to sign up for 20 years. And they did it. They all did it. And it worked. Now, let me see if he said anything else. Well, that's all Ted said then. I just ended up by saying, I'm very glad that my food waste are going to a farm and I'm glad we're catching up with the schools, which have been doing it for a number of years. I was amazed at even little kindergarten kids emptying milk out of their cart and knowing where to put it and so forth. They have a very good system. And the college over here, on every single floor, this is before coronavirus, they had signs telling exactly where everything should go, even batteries or furniture or anything. And plus, they had, you know, their trash and their recyclable bins on every single floor. They've been doing that for a number of years. So, anyway, I'm really, really glad about that. But I also would like to say that you can't, at least Ted told me this, you can't make too much of the waste business because food waste eventually, you know, they compost in the soil, in the landfill. But the plastic, all it does is rust. It never moves. It's all there. All those old plastic bags and the toys and so forth, they're there. So I hope you'll consider greatly trying to get away from using the landfill. When I read it in the paper, I, so many articles, you know, I, I thought, hey, they're gonna vote pretty soon, I better do something. So that's what I did.
Bill?
Joan, thank you, as you probably know, because we've seen each other there, I sit in on many of the waste reduction.
Well, you see how I can easily ramble so long.
No, not at all.
That's why I wrote it.
But everything you have said is accurate in terms of the discussions that have gone on and so on. And I suspect when you get, hear our budget discussions in the next, at the end of the month, that you will hear more about this because there's a lot of interesting information there to compare in terms of how we do things and how we might do things and what the, what the risks are. And Bob Harrington has put into his long-range plan for equipment, some different types of roller boxes and so on that might fit right in with what you're saying also. So stay, stay tuned. It's not a short-term, easy decision, but your influence and the group of people that are working on the Solid Waste Committee are very much in accord with what you're saying.
Incidentally, if you wanted to visit one of our small towns, a good one to visit would be Bradford. It's quite, it's remarkable that the woman, I'll call her young woman, she's young to me, young woman, that, and how much they recycle.
They, the commit, various members of the committee have visited Bradford.
And they have, they have the room, plenty of the room.
They go up to Guilford, apparently Guilford has a very interesting system, they've been working with Lebanon, there's, there's a lot going on, but it's, it's, it's a difficult issue because we're dealing with short-term issues in the recyclable market as well as long-term issues of landfills. So stay tuned, but you're right on the right topic.
Good.
Thank you, Joan. Well, I think it's, I think it's important that you continue to keep it in front of us.
Kim can send them to me.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Joan. All right. The next item on our agenda is seasonal parking at Elkins and Buckland. And the idea is that we would allow parking when the beaches are not being used and you do not need a tag to park there. So, Kim, do you have anything further on that one?
Right. Back in April, Jamie Hess came before the board because one of his friends was, I don't think the person was ticketed, but was asked to leave the dump road where we have permit-only parking. So the permit-only parking for the beaches is year-round. Obviously, the beaches are only opened in the summer, so Jamie's request was that the board consider making it permit-only seasonally, so in the summertime mainly. So.
All right. Well, if both of you are in agreement, then we should hold a public hearing about this so that any neighbors or interested parties can attend. And I would suggest we do that in November, when we get through the budget cycle. Is that good for both of you? Okay. All right. Thanks, Kim. Next is a discussion of our wage and compensation study, and Kim had some recommendations on this.
So to begin the wage study work by the Selectmen, I suggest that at least we start the process with making some of the changes that I think are sort of kind of more routine. The first one being, there's a recommendation that we make changes to our job descriptions. Those changes, I can read them aloud, to point out to people who accept jobs from the town of New London, of certain requirements in the jobs. The first one is, put a statement on all job descriptions that says the essential functions or duties listed below are intended only as illustrations of the various types of work that may be performed. The omission of specific statements of duties does not exclude them from the position if the work is similar, related, or a logical assignment to the position. The second suggested, also under essential functions, is to say that in-person contact is an essential function of this position. This is not a remote position. And finally, that this job description does not constitute an employment agreement between the employer and employee and is subject to change by the employer as the needs of the employer and requirements of the job change. Then the person would be asked to sign the form acknowledging that they've read and understand the job duties and expectations as outlined in the job description. Currently, we do have them sign their personnel policies, but I do think it's a good idea to put these things in our job descriptions as well and have them signed off as well. So I would recommend that you adopt that, those changes as recommended by Municipal Resources.
I'll move that if you want.
All right. Should we take a motion on each of these?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or can't we just do it for all?
You can either way.
We could do it for all.
If you're gonna, if you think you're gonna go through all of them, or you can pick and choose after we finish the discussion.
They're all written in the reports that we have as a record.
Right, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, of those three, yeah, one motion on those.
Yeah.
So I would move that we do that and then we can have a discussion if we, after we've cut the motion.
You second?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then we'll go through the others and then have a discussion. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And next issue I would suggest you begin to look at is the issue of the benefits. There's a section that Municipal Matters Included that suggested that you consider some changes in benefits. If there are any that you are aware of that you're comfortable making now, and one of them might be sick time, I have heard some discussion by some of you that suggests that maybe the seven days of sick time is an area that you would consider changing to make it, I think Municipal Resources, MRI suggests adding three to five days, which I think would be a good thing. We have a lot of employees with young children, and as we know, young children tend to get sick more, and parents need to stay home with that child. And when that happens, it leaves little or no time should the actual employee get sick. So you might want to consider increasing that. I would ask that other benefit changes hold off and you instruct the, me and the department heads to get together and so that we can bring to you some suggestions, because I think the department heads are in the best position to know what they've heard from their staff. And they could bring those ideas forward and then you can work on those. So my recommendation would be, if you think the sick time issue is one that you're ready to discuss tonight, if not, then that can hold off, but instruct the, me and the department heads to give you some recommendations on other benefits. And those kinds of things might be having a cash value to sick time. That was one of the ones that MRI identified as being somewhat common. And there's some other ones. I think our, our department heads will come up with some others that maybe even MRI hasn't heard of.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be a good idea to have the department heads weigh in on this after they've discussed it with their staff because there are things that are much, maybe more important to, to members of the community or members of the workforce than we realize. So I think we, we could hold off on that one.
On the whole question of sick days?
No, yeah, on the sick days.
So I did have a question about that, if I can ask. What is the difference between sick day and personal day in the way our system works?
Personal days you're allowed to take for any reason, like one personal, so we have nine holidays and two personal days. So the nine holidays, obviously the holidays are set by the town, two personal days you can take for any reason. Sick time, you should be taking only for your sickness or your children's sickness. So personal days, any reason at all, sick time, you're sick, your child's sick, your spouse is sick.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on sick days. Are they, do they have to be used in the calendar year? Can they be?
No, you can, you can save them up, right.
You can save them up?
You can save them up to a certain limit.
Yeah.
And then, and there's no cash value. So when you separate employment, if you have comp time or if you have vacation time, leave time, there's cash value to those things. Comp time is obviously your own overtime, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's time you've earned. Leave time, up to 240 hours, that's payable on separation. Sick time, there's no. And so that's, that's what some employers say, well, since there's no cash value.
Right.
There can be abuse where people sort of a use it or lose it idea, so some employers feel that employees will take it just because they have it. We haven't seen that really happen here.
All right, the pay scale?
Right. So you can discuss, I mean, you have adopted the pay scale. When you take a look at it, you'll see that the 75th percentile is what you, at the last meeting, decided that pay scale you were in favor of. As you see with it, the lower end of the pay grades are under 70, the 75th percentile. And the reason for that is because we have, most, most grades have 15 steps, some have 18 steps. If we were to start at the minimum of the 75th percentile, we wouldn't be able to have 18 steps because there's not that big a, a spread since we have a 2.5% increase. Each step is 2.5%. And so the discussion that you would have is, do you want to keep it that way? Do you want all employees to be at the 75th percentile or better? Or the way it is now, there's some flexibility. So there, there could be a situation where we get, we hire somebody with, let's say, no experience at all. That may be a situation where 75th percentile is not appropriate. So the question that you'll be discussing is whether you are okay with, in some instances, the lower grades being under the 75th percentile.
Do we have, do we have something that shows us? I need visual on this.
Yeah, so in your, in your book, you'll see the suggested pay grades.
Yeah.
And you'll also see the charts of the, where they give us the 75th percentile and also the 60th.
Is that in this one? Oh, God, okay. It's this one, right?
It's the, has the yellow. I blew it up. Yes, I blew it up, so it's, that's the same thing that's in the book.
Okay. Market data report. So, comp data.
So, BB.
Higher and lower. Okay.
So BB, a good example is go all the way down to grade 18.
Yeah.
The, the minimum there on the 75th percentile is 5127, which of course is way up the line here. Step seven would be, be where you would find the minimum.
Okay.
And so I think the question that Kim is raising with us, just use this line as an example, is do we leave the first six steps there that are below the 75th percentile minimum for situations where we might want to hire somebody even below our normal pay policy because of perhaps their new inexperience in what they're doing? They may be somebody, for example, who we think would do a good job at that particular position at that level, but whose experience is someplace else, so we want to have a trial period. We have one employee that we had a trial probation period for earlier this year, and that would be an example of saying, well, let's see how that person performs in that role before we move them into the, the step that would be the first step under the 75%. The alternative would be to tell, ask Kim and Lynn to eliminate all of the steps below for each grade that are below the 75th percentile. But I think that, that we don't need to do that if we're managing it to the 75th percentile, except when there's an example of somebody new with, doesn't have the experience, or I think sometimes of the part-time employees perhaps need to be treated a little bit differently than permanent employees and so on. So I would, I would leave it, but knowing that the goal is to have people in the 75th percentile and less, we have a good cause to say we're doing, we're taking a different approach temporarily. Does that say?
Yeah, and I mean, the one that Bill was talking about, the 18th, is the town administrator. So, so let's say I leave because I've won the Powerball and, you know, I don't need the money anymore. And... And, and you're able, either because of, there's a whole bunch of people applying them, or you get somebody who's never been a town administrator and you say, hey, we can hire this person and we have competent other department heads that could help. You could get the person less. So I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing, because we know what the 75th percentile is. We have the paperwork on that. And when we go to hire people, we'll be looking at that amount and making only changes below it when we think it's for some reason. And I would say the main reason would be experience. And I suppose it could happen that the job market turns around some point and we have more employees than jobs. I don't think that's gonna happen anytime soon, but... You know, because the other, the other way, if you don't do it that way, then there's less steps. And we've always often seen that having less steps is a problem, because people getting to the top step too quickly can be an issue as well.
Yep.
I think what we should be doing here is keeping it the way it is, but asking Kim to report to us on any exceptions as she manages the pay plan for the, all the employees, so that we're aware of situations that are there and why they're there. That make sense?
Yep.
I mean, we only have, we have less than 40 positions, so this, we're not talking about a huge burden here.
Right.
And, but there, you know, a whole variety of positions. They go from very straightforward jobs to more complex ones. I see the fire chief here, he's a good example of a slightly more complex job.
Slightly.
Town clerk, same thing.
Right.
So it'll be an evolving process. I mean, we're gonna see how this works out. You can make changes to it whenever you want, whenever we need to. I mean, there'll be situations where I will come before you to ask for certain things, either somebody above what we would normally start or below. And those are decisions that we can talk about and to decide from there.
Just as long as you don't think this affects any future hiring that you can think of at the moment. But you can always come back to it.
No, I think the job market that we have now, the 75th percentile is the amount that we'll be looking to hire people. And I think that's what Carol and her study found, that these minimums, especially the minimums, that's really what she's seeing in the market. In the coming weeks, I'll be talking to you about some employees who are currently under the minimum. And we'll be talking about that. And those are the people, that's why this study was done, for us to find out, are we paying our people competitive rates? And so those people that are currently under, there'll be discussions individually of those employees and say, okay, what are we gonna do with these people? And, and those results are exactly why we did this study.
Okay. So it seems to me the one thing that we agreed we can move forward on is additions to all job descriptions.
Yep.
Is that correct?
That's the motion that's on the floor, yeah.
Okay. But I thought you were gonna say, I'll do them all three.
Yeah, but that's the only one that's left, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I could act on the others.
Okay.
I mean, I think the one we just talked about, we're just reaffirming them.
You already did.
We accepted the plan at our last meeting that we're gonna keep it the way it is.
Right. I just wanted to point out that if you did look at the 75th percentile, as Bill pointed out with grade 18, you'll see the minimum, the first step, is lower than the minimum 75th percentile.
So, all those in favor of adding the additions to all job descriptions?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're good. So, um, Kim, do you have a town administrators' report?
I do. We're gonna pass over the donation.
Right, you said that that was requested, right?
I just wanted to make a note. I don't think that she wants anything. Okay, I'd like to report on the water precinct meeting that was held last night. Chief Cobb and Public Works Foreman Mike Murphy attended, and they reported to me what was said, or kind of a summary of what happened. This was a discussion on the Main Street Water Main Replacement Project. The precinct commissioners expect to go out to bid in January. The project will be done in three phases. Newport Road to Parkside, Parkside to Woodcrest, Woodcrest to Squires Lane. They expect about three months per phase, give or take. There's gonna be 6,000 feet of pipe replacement. They expect about three months per phase, although they, they expect the starting date to be April and end in November, so that's about eight months. But it should, eight to nine months is what they're expecting the total project time to be. The estimate that they have right now is 2 million to 5 million. They have asked Underwood engineers to come back with something a bit more tight than that. I understand that Rip Cross asked if more than one phase could be worked on at a time, and they're gonna check into that. Obviously, if they could work on two phases at the same time, that would shorten it. So that's that project. There was discussion about closing Main Street just one lane, because there's concern on the part of the police, and I'm sure fire as well, about detouring traffic down Barrett Road. Obviously, there'll be locals that know about that will likely go down there, but they're gonna keep it one lane so that the most of the traffic will stay on Main Street. So it's gonna be a big project. There'll be flaggers and police officers in the areas that's kind of dicey, so. So stay tuned on that, we'll hear more on that. But it sounds kind of optimistic, you know, if they go out to bid in January, hopefully they get a lot of bids and actually start in April, that's quick. And Lynn and I are working on budgets, department heads.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
It's, it seems to me that we should ask the water precinct maybe to help us say a little bit more about this at our December town gathering, because I think people are going to suddenly hear about it and have questions. It's a good opportunity for us to practice our transparency. I'm sure we can simplify those engineering plans into something that's a little bit easier to read with three pieces, maybe take 10 minutes to...
So we're December citizens' meeting?
No, the one, aren't we having a meeting on December 15th?
Oh, your selectmen's meeting.
Yeah.
You want to invite the commissioners in?
No, the Colby Sawyer meeting.
The meeting at Colby Sawyer.
Oh, 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 wow. That means, yeah. And you want to invite them in?
Well, I wasn't so sure. We either do that or perhaps have one of our people, Chief Cobb or somebody, translate this or have one of the commissioners come if we want. But it seems to me this is a perfect example of communicating, they may not do this, and that we could take up the role of communicating with the community about what's gonna happen, because this is gonna be disruptive.
Yep. Well, I guess Chief Cobb brought up the question of how are you gonna let everybody know? And they are working on their communications plan.
But I don't think we should just wait for them to do it if we have an opportunity in December to...
No, but we can certainly invite them in for the December meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, having it...
Not in those detailed engineering plans that you sent us, but...
And maybe in the next meeting that you go to, you can ask them if they could come and maybe do a little presentation.
Perfect, yep. But Epstein, were you there yesterday? So you know how complicated, I wasn't there, but I've seen the plans. But I think this would be, people like you who don't come to all our meetings would benefit from being able to talk, hear about this, talk about it, understand what's, the impact's gonna be not only on Barrett Road, but also on the businesses on Main Street and so on. We're just all great, we've all seen construction projects that don't often happen on Main Street in New London. Okay, thank you.
And finally, we are putting together budgets, so you'll have your budgets a week before, at least, of your October 27 budget review. That will be changed from, we were gonna start at 8:00, now we'll start about 10:15 after the community breakfast at Colby Sawyer College. So that's all we have.
BB, have you been to any meetings?
Had a watershed meeting last Friday, but it was just a kind of a catch-up and a regrouping and how are we gonna move forward kind of thing. No, no other updates.
Okay. Bill?
The, the regular water meeting of commissioners was on Monday, and the meeting that Kim has just referred to got postponed until yesterday. But the only thing they talked about on Monday that was of any interest is that water meeting, water meter reading is going on. So precinct people will be getting their bills soon. That's it. It seemed to be going well, there's no, no big issues other than planning for this immense project.
Well, and we all were here for a demonstration of a new voting machine today, and I think we're gonna leave that recommendation to our town clerk and our moderator, who will be using these. And I, it was certainly interesting, but I, they're considering two machines, so whatever they decide, I think we'll probably go with. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of September 14?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Trina.
Okay. And the next selectmen's meeting will be Thursday, October 26, 5:30 here.
Aren't we gonna do 4:30 when we decide?
Oh, yeah, 4:30, because we're gonna meet with a company about design work for the, a possible police station.
Right.
And the citizens' committee is meeting this Saturday at 7:30. The planning board's next Tuesday at 6:30. And then there's Housing Commission, Conservation. They're all listed on the, on the town's website. So...
So in addition to that, Dan, I don't know what communications, how the, the project that the Colby Sawyer students are working on, who they're communicating with, but they've communicated with me about a presentation on December 7 at 5:30 in the afternoon. I don't know if...
Yeah, I think we all got that email.
Okay, good. It only showed my name on it, so I just wanted to make sure we had that. Kim, you...
Is that what this is?
No, that's, yeah. So for, yes, for you, December 7 at 5:30 is when they're planning to make their interim presentation.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91-A colon 3, number 2?
So moved.
I need everyone to state their name and say yes.
Bill, yes.
BB, yes.
Janet, yes. Okay, well, thank you all for coming.